All right. Let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands a nation where we're all
All right, roll call. All members of council are present.
Brandon's up there.
With Brandon Listowski online and Council Santiago because it's her birthday, excused. Approval of the agenda.
You have to approve?
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second to approve the agenda, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone that would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Please step forward to the microphone and state your name and city for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
My name is Marie McNe.
Speak into the microphone. Oh, that's okay.
It's closer here. My name is Marie McNe. I've been a resident of Scapus for a little under three decades. I've been here quite some time. I had a conversation with the mayor at the town hall meeting not long ago and as a result, I went and spoke to a couple of my neighbors and out of the three neighbors I talked to, all three of them thought this was a very pressing issue and I needed to mention it and you're well aware of it, but I would like to read the letter that I submitted to you earlier today. Mayor Berg, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak. As members of the Scapus community, we would like to express our concern with regard to police staffing. We were stunned to learn that the city does not have adequate 24/7 coverage. The recent spike in crime threatens the safety and livability of our community. And as long-term residents, we want to strongly urge you to utilize the city's American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds to immediately address the situation. Although we understand that the council is considering several options for utilizing the funds, we believe the safety and security of the community to be the highest priority. Scapus is growing quickly. We have numerous multifamily dwellings, single-family residences under construction currently. They also have a growing corporate presence in the city. We are ill-prepared from a public safety standpoint for this growth. An on-call police presence, as is currently being used for a few hours a day or several hours a day, depending on the day, is not sufficient to support the community. To attract and retain good officers, we believe our recruitment process needs to be strong and competitive. We would like to request that the majority of ARPA funds be used to enhance salaries and bonus plans for prospective police candidates. Additionally, a bonus would not only attract good candidates, but should be distributed to our current police staff in order to ensure retention. This would also show the existing staff that we appreciate their dedicated service through what has been less than ideal circumstances in the police profession or for the police profession over the last few years. Again, we understand that there are several multiple options being considered for the use of the ARPA funds, however, without vital infrastructure such as public safety, any community improvements could be at risk. Consideration is appreciated and we look forward to hearing how you might distribute the funds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you. I do know that we did use some to buy a police car and we're looking at how to use the rest of them.
Yeah.
I appreciated you coming forward at the annual town hall meeting.
Sure. My understanding is we're down two vehicles. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly? We need two vehicles?
We just purchased, we just purchased two. So one with, one with ARPA funds and one with the regular budgeted funds.
Perfect. Okay.
So we, so we are doing better in that regard.
Okay. And I did also review, just, I won't keep, I won't keep speaking, but I did also review the current enticements, if you will, for lateral transfers and I didn't consider it very appealing. It looked like it took five years to get a $5,000 total bonus for coming to Scapus. That's just my opinion, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none? I assume everyone came here for the discussion about canceling the July 5th city council. Right? Maybe not. All right, we'll close public comments. Next item consent agenda, the May 2nd, 2022 city council meeting minutes. I have a motion. Moved. Hearing a motion by councilor polling, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilor, so President Grayson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A new business, the CEP application presentation, Isaac.
And council, we received 16 applicants for the CEP this year. We invited them to come to this council meeting to give presentations if so wished. We asked them to keep them to five minutes due to the exceptionally large number of applicants. Preferably to present information or to open up to Q and A if you prefer. I think the goal for tonight is that as a council, you look at applications and the presentations and decide who worked a fund or not to make sure that while you're allocating those funds, it's a council action which requires foremore. And with that, the mayor has a list of all.
Does the five minutes include our questions and the back and forth between them?
Up to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're just going to start at the top of the list like we always do. We should start at the bottom and make a, make Laura Beth stay here all night long. Now we'll go with the Amani Center. Beth, I've known you for way too long, so.
I appreciate you letting me go first because I have kids at home that need mom to come home and feed them, so. Beth Palito with the Amani Center, we are Columbia County Child Abuse Assessment Center. And I believe that most of council is aware of what we do, but we are the investigative, unbiased, forensic and medical evaluation investigative side of child abuse neglect in Columbia County. So we assist your police force in doing investigations in a trauma-informed and child-friendly manner, developmentally appropriate to their age and intellectual ability. Normally, we ask for support for general operating and this year we actually came with a specific request to help us offset the cost of a new server because we are required to hold evidence for 30 years past and a client's 18th birthday. And so we have a lot of information that is digital and need to be able to retain that for a considerable amount of time. And we have been advised by our IT that our server is currently degrading and will probably not be useful by the end of this year. So we have asked for council to help us offset the cost of a grant that we obtained from National Children's Alliance. The server is $17,888. National Children's Alliance has covered $12,880. We've asked council to cover the remaining $5,000 of that server, so.
I just wanted to thank you for such a detailed application. It was very clear to read and know what you were going to present tonight. So thank you for taking the time. I can tell you put a lot of time into this.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Does Casper Children just not here? Riverside Community Outreach.
So how will I know when it's been five minutes? I'm looking for, okay, I can get very passionate about this topic, so, perfect. You can tell me to stop talking. So my name is Abby Olson and I'm the executive director and founder of Riverside Community Outreach. And we were here last year via Zoom to ask for the very first time for the Scapus City Council to invest in our nonprofit, which serves vulnerable children and supports families impacted by foster care. In all of Columbia County, we actually in 2020 branched out to Tillamook and Clotsepa as well. I have been a foster mom. I'm an adoptive mom. I have 10 beautiful children, five adopted and five biological and half a dozen that came and went on their way. And so I'm deeply passionate about walking alongside foster families and making the journey better. I also, because of my personal experience, feel that it's really important that we not only serve children in crisis, but we look at the whole picture. And so our services not only support children while they're in foster care, but we support reunification and we walk alongside DHS whenever possible to support prevention. So our fostering success program is what has been outlined for you in the presentation and in the application. Many, many years ago, so almost 20 years ago was when I became a foster mom. And there was a time before RCO existed when you were kind of on your own if you were a foster parent. And I remember we had a request for a little girl and our car was full and the car seats were full, but she needed a home. So we went and purchased a brand-new car seat and my husband and I ate ramen. And that was the reality of what it has been like. And so one of our goals is to change that. So we provide car seats. We meet those tangible needs for families. And also I remember when we had a little guy that we'd had for almost a year and when it was time for him to go home, I packed up all his stuff and I took him to be with his dad. And an hour after I dropped him off for the last time, his dad called me and asked where the milk was. And it shocked me at first, but the reality was, was that every single time he'd had a visit, I had packed milk and snacks and everything that he would need. And so here was his son being returned to him and he was not set up or equipped for it, for me to not be an active part in his life anymore. And so just that whole piece, like I said, of prevention and support and recruitment of foster parents and reunification. 57% of kids will return home. And so making sure we're setting those families up for success because the less times children can move, the less trauma is in their lives. So we are asking, and you know, the question where it says, will you need funding for this in the future? And I thought, y'all should get used to my face. Because the truth is, as long as we have children in our community in foster care, they need us to step up and, and support them. So it's not a quick, here's some money and we solve the problem, but here's a way that you can invest in the community, the children who live right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your application was very thorough. Thank you.
Yes, very detailed.
All right, Run with Neil.
Hi, this is Sarah Wad Elrod. I'm joining via Teams. I am on the board with Run with Neil. As you know, we've applied for a grant to assist us in support of our annual run in September, which serves as Run with Neil's biggest fundraiser. Run with Neil is a 501(c)(3) run solely by volunteers. We would love to be able to tell our donors and participants that nearly every dollar raised at this year's race will go directly back into the community of Scapus. This grant and community partnerships would make this possible. The Community Enhancement Program Grant would cover costs for timing, advertising, race day support, permits and additional needs as determined by the board and community. Financial assistance with this portion means we will be capable of supporting additional mentorship programs, sponsorships of camps, and we'll continue exploring scholarships in the future. Countless times over the last year and a half, we've been approached by parents, kids and coaches with real-life examples of their experiences and the lack of mental and physical health resources. I can tell you COVID made this even more challenging. Run with Neil has been active in finding ways to meet these needs in ways that are impactful to our youth. We hope that you will help us in continuing to bridge this gap for Scapus. You may have seen us out in the community as we are active and continually assessing needs and finding creative ways to bring resources to the youth of Scapus. Your support with the CEP grant directly affects the financial impact we can make with our dollars raised. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes.
Run for Neil had a big presence at the junior high track meet on Saturday, a big and positive presence and appreciate you being there and all you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list, jump to the S's. Scapus Adventist School. Oh, they're not on the list. All right, next one, Scapus Community and Senior Center.
Good evening. My name is Kay Stuckwaring. I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors for the Scapus Community and Senior Center. At the present time, we are completely volunteer. There is no executive director per se, which has made an awful big load on my shoulders. Currently trying to get volunteers, of course, they're hard to come by. I should also point out that Scapus Community and Senior Center is open to anyone over the age of 18 and even families if the children are accompanied by their parents. So we're not just a senior center anymore. This has been true for the last three or four years, but with COVID, there's been very little advance made as far as community members are concerned. We do have quite a few, well, it's over 200 members right now. Most of them have resigned that had dropped out during COVID and are reaffirming their memberships. So the our community within the center is growing. We do have a lot of needs right now since the buildings have been neglected for two years. We are in the process of having the thrift store roof replaced. It hasn't happened yet, but it's on the agenda and as soon as the contractor is available, it will begin. We have several other siding on the center itself, as well as a roof for the bread store. We did get our bus completely re-hauled, overhauled, I guess I should say. The catalytic converter was stolen at the first part of the pandemic. We've replaced that, of course, batteries, tires and all the rest of it. So we do have funds coming in from the thrift store particularly. And right now bingo is going gangbusters. We have had, well, Friday night, there were 51 players. And considering the fact that in the past, it's only been 20 players, that's a great improvement. So that is helping provide the funds to do a lot of the necessary repairs. I just got the bad news. Well, it's not totally bad yet, but it looks like one of our air conditioners, conditioners is going to have to be, I shouldn't say air conditioner, it's an HVAC unit, which I believe we have four on the roof. Two were purchased a few years ago, but this one, they said, is so old, they're not sure they can get the part. And it's not, not feeding the gas or whatever in the way it's supposed to. So we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. One of the things that we need or would like to have, I should say, is the carpet replaced in the lobby so that we look more presentable for people coming in. Like I say, everything is, is working to get it back up to a point where people are going to be happy to come in and join us for the activities. We do have those starting. We have ceramics, painting. Of course, Tai Chi for those who want to improve their balance. We just have a camera class starting tomorrow. We have a paint night scheduled for this Thursday night. The last one last month, we had about 10 people come in, which was nice. Hopefully we'll have that much or more this time. All of these things bring in a little bit of money. But with the budget we're facing with these repairs that need to be done, we could sure use the help to get that carpet replaced in the lobby so that we can make a more presentable appearance. Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
I, I do. Thank you for your continual leadership at the Community Senior Center. I think you could just throw your hands in the air and walk out at any time and you haven't. You're very resilient. I know that Counselor Miller was in contact with you and some other supports. I believe you've received help or you're getting help with your technology or computer systems.
Yes, but we could sure use some more.
Okay. Was there any further discussion about helping coordinate something with your roof and getting? It felt like your quote was quite extreme. Were we following up on that?
Yeah, so the, would you like to explain?
The roof quotes, I feel, were within reason considering what the work is going to be done.
Okay.
The one that I'm worried about is the one bid that we've received on the siding, which at this point is already at 40,000 and we're told that prices are going up.
Sure. So have you, have you coordinated with anyone in regards to demo and removal and replacement of this carpet and flooring in the front?
No, I have not.
Okay.
We did have it voluntarily cleaned last week, so it looks a little better, but the seams and everything, I don't know how old the carpet is, but I know it's been on that floor since before 2010. Just how old it is, I do not know. I do know that it is, it is stained and it was never laid right in the first place.
You know how many square feet that space is? Say no.
No.
Hey.
About 400 or more.
All right, thank you.
Big.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate, for all your effort.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Scapus Community Club. Farmers Market, I believe Farmers Market.
All right. Hello, my name is Bill Blank. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm here representing the Scapus Farmers Market. I'm the market manager. Want to thank you for your consideration for our request for a Community Enhancement Program Grant. And want to help, you know, welcome us along with the others for consideration. I wrote most of this down. I'm going to try to follow it because I know you had five minutes and five minutes. I'm going to try to stay within your five minutes and I respect your time, so. Do you know the Scapus Community Club Farmers Market has been a big role part of the community for 20 years? Many of you probably know that. Over these many years, we're still using signs and equipment that we purchased from our initial opening. We have endured the impact of COVID and wildfire smoke purchased and reducing our market seasons. As a part of the community club, we've been affected by the reduced revenue from the absence of popular annual sauerkraut festival event. And to adjust for this, we've adjusted our budget for marketing and promotion to maintain our sustainability. But in doing so, we've also reduced the impact on our promotion or promoting our community and the city of Scapus. A vibrant farmer's market has both indirectly and physically located here in the area surrounding this area. We're in this very area where we're holding this, this very meeting out here on Second Street. So our request is to help vitalize not only our market, but the city as well as we'll be able to return to an increased presence via advertising promotion, a billboard, screen ads. We'll be able to replace a 20-year-old banner that is tattered and torn, damaged, like canopies, and bring back uplifting music to the market more. Over the years, we've requested little and operate within our own nonprofit fashion. But to continue to operate feasibly, return successfully in the post-academic reality and return back to our pre-COVID years, we are requesting your help in doing so with what you can. How we increase our 20th season and the popularity of this community event depends on what we receive. So we can leverage it to the utmost. Want to thank you again for considering us. Your award will help replace the revenue we generate throughout the season that is in turn providing the cost of advertising, marketing, promoting this event. This keeps us sustainable while we maximize the success of the market. Farmer's Market provides and promotes skills of local artisans, provides fresh-grown produce grown in the farms and the gardens of local growers. It adds joy, a place where the community meets. And so much, it's like the front porch of a community. We want to thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Blank.
Thank you. Thank you for continuing and leading that event. Thank you.
It's an all-volunteer market, so we could use some volunteer.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right, the Scapus High School Future Business Leaders of America.
All right.
Thanks for having me, you guys. My name's Ryan Poster. I'm the Scapus FBLA faculty advisor. I've been doing this for 14 years. Last couple of years, it's been getting a little different. We've been in person, not in person, but online. Really seen our numbers drop. Our 50th year at Scapus FBLA was our 50th year. Last year, we had four members due to the online and we've grown to 22 now that we're back in person. So we're looking to keep increasing numbers. So I'm basically here, I was told by my secretary that this was an opportunity and constantly looking for ways to help fundraise. So we're taking six kids to the national conference next month in Chicago. It's the first time we'll be in person since 2019, the pre-pandemic time. So I got six kids going with the chaperone and we're just currently fundraising. So we're just kind of coming here to ask, just for a small amount, if you guys have the the ability to, you know, give that to us, it'd help six of our high school kids experience that national experience. I don't know if any of you knew anyone in FBLA, but there's quite a few community members that do do this. So we're really appreciative of any help we can get. And I'm super excited for the kids to have this experience in nationals. So much appreciation for just your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for the leadership.
You're the best.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, next up, Scapus Historical Society. Oh, Coach McNabb wants to be up here.
He's patient. He's patient.
Want to know how the team's going to do, you know?
Hi, I'm Heather Arness. I'm filling in for Janet Williams, who was the one that actually wrote the grant for us this time. And I'm on the board of the Historical Society. We operate the Watts House. And we do a lot of things. Right now, we're renovating that basement. I don't know if any of you've been there lately, but there have been some huge improvements going on and some really fun events. We just had a Mother's Day tea and packed the house and it was very successful. But in an attempt to bring the community something really fun to do during the holidays, we would like to sponsor and conduct a lighting competition, community-wide. And we're just hoping that if we get the grant, we're going to use some of that money to do prizes. And then we're also going to use some of the money for increasing and improving, excuse me, the Watts House lighting. You know, the little figures that are out there. We'd like to improve some of that. And so that's where those funds would be useful. And so that's where those funds would be useful. Any questions about our competition, our Christmas lighting competition? The zone would be school district boundaries.
When you, Mr. Mayor? When you say competition, can you explain and can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, we would start marketing it right away and letting people know that there's going to be a Christmas lighting, you know, competition. There's some really great ones out there already. But we would like to have the community involved in that as early as possible, knowing about it as early as possible. And then the competition would be based on voting. And so that would be something we would we would coordinate community wide through the marketing and all that. But, you know, we envision people taking, you know, like the assisted living people. Did you see that in the grant? The assisted living people maybe doing some voting and some driving around in their buses and vans and just so we we everybody can enjoy it. My son and I personally drive around and count Santas. It's our thing. Anyway, that's that's kind of what, did I answer your question?
You did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's a great, great, great idea. And I think it could be a kind of a community unifying event.
Yeah, kind of a.
We have a lot of things going on, but nothing quite like this.
Yeah, our night market was incredibly successful during the holiday. I think people are excited about doing things during that time.
I've seen people like, I've seen people independently, like dropping off boxes of chocolates, like our family voted your house, the number one, you know, in the city. And so I've seen people do that. So would people be voting like on an app or turn in a paper to the Watts House or?
Yeah, as far as I know, there'll be several different mechanisms.
Okay.
So, yeah, and then we have a huge mailing list for our, I hope you guys get it, our our newsletter.
Historical Society Newsletter.
Historic, you probably do. Should all be on it because it's a good one.
We'll make that happen. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
All right, Scapoose Farmers Youth Program.
Hello, my name is Sean McNabb, longtime Scapoose resident. In fact, I've been here so long, I was Thai, Megan, Justin, and Ryan's elementary PE teacher. So that tells you how long I've been here.
Gray hairs here, don't notice that.
You know, you've heard me talk a lot about the enthusiasm with our kids and I see a lot of enthusiasm in in our in our town, at our schools. And I've noticed since we've been back that enthusiasm hasn't quite been, you know, what it's what it's been like the thirty years I've been here. And I really truly feel like that the enthusiasm that we have with kids is because of the programs that we have here in Scapoose. Youth sports, kids being involved in a lot of different activities. Once they get into high school, they're happy kids. They like being there and it's that enthusiasm that makes it so fun and all the programs and the things that they do. This rec center allows kids to be able to do some things that they haven't been able to do in a couple of years. The rec centers, we've been doing, I want to say twenty seven, twenty eight years. It's a six week program during that. It's a Monday through Friday during the day. There's activities, athletics, there's arts and crafts, there's lots of board games. And then once a week, they go on an excursion. So we'd like to be able to continue to do that. We have done it for a couple of summers now. And we appreciate your consideration and all the support from past years. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Sean. It's a great program and it's been going a long time. A lot of kids have benefited from over the years.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you, Sean.
Appreciate the leadership. Thank you.
All right, next up, Bat, Scapoose Little League.
Feel free.
We played baseball together, so.
They're all out coaching. It's one of our few days that they've been able to actually outplay. And that brings us to why we're here. Veterans Park, City Park, fully helped build it. We built it. We spent over a hundred thousand dollars
Build back.
What they're looking for is some money. Our dirt is not a very good dirt. We haven't been able to play a lot of games on it, obviously with the rain this year, but it's every year. It's kind of underwater. It doesn't drain very well. Two thousand eighteen, we had to put fifty two hundred dollars worth of dirt on it, another thousand in field conditioner. And so they're asking for a little bit of support on that. We try to keep our rates fees down for all the kids to play in Little League very low and we have about a hundred volunteers. And so we try to keep our the money coming in very low. So this is some big expenditures that they're looking for some help on. One, that will make the field safer and playable. They've had to move a lot of their games to other fields in other cities. This is the only city park field that we have. The other ones are all on school district property and and they've been able to play quite a bit. Games on there is a little bit bitter drainage, bitter, different dirt. And so we're looking to really do some good maintenance, raising the field up a few inches will help it drain better. In the field conditioner, some score booth platforms, a couple of major expenditures that they haven't been able to get into their budget. They're looking for a little help on.
Questions?
Any questions? So you would, you guys expect to have, if you guys got this funding, you'd expect to have this project done this summer and?
Yes, and this doesn't just help Little League. We have a great relationship with the city on maintenance of it. We take care of everything inside the fence during the season from the mowing and and all the other dirt work and keeping it clean. And the city does all the outside of the fence work. But for like fall and summer kids that come and play, yeah, we will have this done as soon as we can get on the field safely with big equipment, have the dirt brought in. We do host a lot of tournaments. It is a very nice field. So we're hosting district tournaments. We're Portland, St. Helens, Rainier Classic, and I all come in to play. We host some state tournaments, even if our teams aren't involved. So we're bringing a lot of people in. And we just want to bring that filled up to what we see at the other parks. And yeah, it should all be done. We're going to probably do a lot of this. Anyway, we just need to, safety purposes. But this will definitely help.
Fringe is a huge problem on the field. It's a beautiful field when it's everything's working right, but a lot of games have been canceled that normally be able to play. The rain has stopped and we've still got water in the field.
Yeah, we are dealing with the city on major drainage issues with it at a later time, some bigger, bigger scope stuff. But the field maintenance itself will really help.
Thanks, Joey.
All right.
You're great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Scapoose Public Library.
Hi, I'm Jeff Wise from Scapoose Public Library. It's been a couple of years since we've asked council for any money. And we're asking this year for Movies in the Park. Everyone knows it. You love it. You can't get it through August without it. We're asking for six hundred dollars, which would underwrite a night of entertainment for the the series of four movie showings. And we bought new equipment this year. We're doing a lot more publicity. We got some money from the PUD to help us with publicity in the screen and equipment. So now we're trying to fill in with the with the entertainment, your private donations and council money. And the library pays for the movie rental fees.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Great program.
Thank you for hosting it. Yeah, really appreciate your leadership on that.
And it's all volunteer. I mean, everyone that works there is volunteer work. We bring in the community. Community foundations to have booths and so on and sell product to make money for their community organization.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Scapoose School District, Justin Ingstrom.
Hello, I'm Justin Ingstrom. I'm care coordinator with the school district. And we are reaching out, seeking some additional funding to support our counseling department and specifically our mental health team. Our community has a shortage of mental health providers and I think through this pandemic, we've seen the needs for mental health support intensified and really brought brought to everyone's attention. So we are looking to support this program to break down the stigma around mental health and also support our suicide prevention and also supporting overall student wellness. I just wanted to highlight one, one statistic that I put in this application that was shocking to me. In the twenty twenty and twenty one school year and the current school year, twenty one, twenty two, there have been at least fourteen suicide attempts that we are aware of by seventh through twelfth graders. An additional eleven students identifying thoughts of suicide needing an assessment. This has resulted in the tragic loss of one of our, at least one community member in the K through twelve age range. So our school district is trying to take on part of this task of supporting mental health needs in the community, just because there isn't enough in our communities currently of clinics and providers. So I wanted to open this up for any questions you guys might have on on the work we're doing to support our students and their mental health needs.
Questions?
Can't think of anything more important. Thanks for your work.
Hi, Justin. Thank you for leading this program. Amazing. So I'm just looking at the spreadsheet here. It's showing that you don't receive any other funding other than what this grant would give you in order to do this work.
Other than the school district investing in the mental health staff. We have a very limited, in some buildings, no, no budget to to support these, the needs that we're trying to meet.
Okay. So I feel like a few years ago, the district went through several reads of a I can't remember the title of it, but it had to do with suicide prevention and a certain policy that was put in front of the school district and the school board approved that policy. And then now this sort of work is being put on school counselors in each building. But in order to do that work, the school district isn't isn't funding in order to make that work happen. Am I reading that correctly?
I think so, yeah. I think there's there's staff in place, but it's helpful to have additional funding to support the work. And I've listed out some of the needs that we are hoping to invest in to support the team and the mental health needs.
So what I'm hearing is you have people, but you don't have the things to make it happen.
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did you have the opportunity to put this in a school district budget as a line item to be approved by the budget committee for the school district?
I did not. This was presented to my supervisor and for them to review and approve to submit to the city.
So there isn't a way for you as a counselor in the school district to seek funding from the school district in order to?
Currently, our counseling budget, well, we're facing budget cuts, so I don't feel like we're in a position to ask for more when they're taking away FTE currently.
Thank you. Some of the things I wanted just to be put out in the open, so I appreciate you answering those questions for me.
Questions?
Yeah, great questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right, next, Paul.
My name is Mike Bradley. I'm with St. Vincent de Paul in Scapoose. We operate out of the St. Vincent's Catholic Church. We have a two day a week food pantry. Do some assistance, financial assistance. And we also do a food for kids program in cooperation with the Scapoose School District. Done this for four years now and through COVID, we did it in a modified fashion and we're even modified now. It's working. And last year, we made a decision not to ask for money through CEP. Generosity of the community and other grants. We felt that we were fine. This year, we, you know, things are changing, getting back to some some form of normal. And looking ahead, we think that, you know, this program is going to require the same attention financially that it it has in the past. So we've asked again for some help through the CEP grant.
Question? Any questions?
Well written application. Thank you.
Could read it?
Yep.
Okay.
Not a doctor. I have some questions.
Yeah.
So when you say that you work in conjunction with the school district, is that they just provide you the names of the people that or how did?
No, they do. Actually, they don't. That's it's all, we know nothing about who gets this.
I guess I shouldn't have said that. The numbers.
Yeah, the number. So previously, we did it based on what they told us by the week they needed bags.
Okay.
Kids. And when with COVID, we, number one, we couldn't work in our own space because cramped. So we asked we could modify and we ended up with NHS student last year doing doing it basically by himself or with one other person packing the bags, which we provided the products. And that led to this year, they're actually doing it in the Help me, Justin. Where are we doing that at? Transition, yeah. So there's a teacher in charge of that and an NHS student who's brought in some other students. So, you know, it's really, I I think it's great. I mean, not only are we just throwing a bag of food somewhere, we've got people that are, you know, recognizing this need that probably maybe never have or, you know, got it. So I I think going forward, it sounds as though at least the people that are there now are willing to do it. And and we certainly are. I mean, it's takes a little bit of manual labor away from us needing to do on a weekly basis. And it gives them an opportunity. And I think they, with everybody there involved, including Justin. Another little angle, I guess. You know, it allows them, I think, to kind of hone in on who needs this. I mean, the counselors are all aware, everybody's aware that it's available. And they're able to, they, oh, there's here's someone that needs this. And I think of my application, maybe I, this is something I never thought of. I'm old. Dream up new things, but if you have a kid come to school in the morning and he's hungry, he's could be distracted or disruptive. That affects everybody in the classroom. That's not just that kid. They could, you know, it spreads its wings pretty quickly and you know, makes it, makes me feel like certainly worth doing. Anything else?
So I mean, this, I'm pretty familiar with these programs and I think that's a great program. Since since a backpack program where
It is.
receive food that they can take home, they can eat. These are, it's a phenomenal program. Honestly, a lot of kids don't, you know, we don't know that they are hungry or they need food and it's great that somebody's out there able to feed them. So you see, are you seeing a larger number coming? I mean, has this been kind of the same?
You know, kind of related to food pantry with COVID, our numbers dropped significantly. And so did the backpack. Now, some of that could be just the logistics of it, you know. But I think the way it's done now, this is, you know, we just initially we were given a list somehow the school district prioritizes who can have this. We were given a list, a numbers list. Confidentiality, we never know who's involved. So when we came back to this, we need to modify this. We can't quite do it. You know, because it was distributed at each school weekly by a number, ten bags to Grant Watts or fifteen bags to Grant Watts. And that was based on numbers that people in the district were coming up with. So now it's, I think it's just kind of I don't think it's done in general through, it's done with some structure, but not the way it was district wide. It's teachers, counselors knowing they they use some help. And so our numbers are actually less. We're, I think we're thirty, between thirty and forty right now. And we were doing sixty a couple of years ago. It was just sixty and now it's thirty or forty and, you know, next week it might be five more because somebody's. The other thing that I think I mentioned, we have a food closet at the high school. And previously, the high school was a tough one. You know, there's a, there is a stigma with going to the office and picking up So now this transition room has a closet in there and transition room has a closet in there and they let the kids know who they know likely need this. Go help yourself. So it's, I think it's working pretty well. Maybe better than a traditional backpack. See how many we can do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question just on numbers here. So you receive your food, the food that goes towards this, we'll call it the backpack program, but the food that goes towards this is food that you receive from the food bank that is stored in your pantry or it's something totally different?
Stored in our pantry and traditionally typically we have been able to purchase quite a lot of it through the food bank and that's changed. Yeah, it's not, we don't get any free food. We buy everything that we.
And that's why we're seeing these numbers on here that you're contributing that, so St. Vincent de Paul is contributing 4,000.
Well, that's, and that's 7,000 has roughly been what we get each year.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, no, there's nothing comes free from the food bank. We purchase through them. They have a food to buy program.
Yeah.
We purchase from local retailers. Probably gonna have to go to St. Helens too.
I know a guy.
I know.
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Bradley, that last year you went out of your way to write us a letter to tell us why you didn't apply. And I really appreciate that, you know, counselor polling asked the question, are numbers going up or numbers going down? You mentioned numbers were going down. And you went out of your way to send us a letter saying, I'm not applying this year because we don't have a high, high need and we want to make sure that the money is spread between all these other applications. And you're here back in front of us. So I trust that when you do come to us, there is a need and when you don't, you've got it handled. So.
I mean, we've seen a full year now of, this is pretty normal. And we did, you know, the one thing that when we were buying through the food bank, the specific items that we could buy, they're rather inexpensive when we buy retail.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a bit of a guessing game, but anticipate with what we've seen this year, we'll have that same expense next year.
Any other questions?
Appears you've helped over 800 families, uh, last year or 2021. Yeah. So that's terrific.
Between the pantry and some of these are the same people, you know, we're there.
How many volunteers do you have involved?
You're looking at him.
Are you offering? Probably about 20, you know, we have some people that do their one day a month, two hours. We have others that spend, we get a delivery once a month from the food bank. We, I don't know how much time we, I mean, we keep track of hours for RSVP. And I think there's about a hundred hours a month.
It's terrific. Thank you.
You know, there's always room for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, United Way.
Different hat. Oh, that's nice of you to do this. Yeah.
You folks at home, you're missing packets. Um, I'm Jeff Weiss again. I'm on the board for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library with United Way. Claire couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to fill in. In your packet are some basic facts about the program. It's a national program that sends, um, pre-selected children's books that are age appropriate to children between the ages of zero and five. And the Dolly Parton Foundation runs it. Um, United Way is the local sponsor. We pay $2.10 a book for every book mailed. Currently there are four, well, when the application was written, there were 483 children within the city limits of Scappus that were enrolled in the program. And total enrollment in the county usually runs around 1,300 children. And this is all paid for with private monies and then asks from different government organizations. The program's been around since 2018. We are the only county in the metro area that has the program. The richer counties apparently can't afford it. So what we're asking for with our ask this year, and as I understand it, we've not been, got, we've never been awarded money from city council, but we're asking for $1,200, which would basically cover two months' worth of Scappus books.
I just want to say that I feel somewhat guilty that I've signed all three of my children up, but I can't thank you enough for them. I mean, we have the means to buy literature and we're very blessed to be able to do that. There's something about opening the mailbox and I got my free book and they just love it. And over the years, collecting these, we've now been able to then take them to, like our neighborhood or even the school lending library and add them to the box and kind of just keep circling them in the system for people to grab free books. And I just can't imagine what it would be like for some families who don't have the means to have early literacy opportunities for their children, show up to our schools in kindergarten, having never even been to preschool. And then having any sort of wherewithal about how to even hold a book or what it is or, so I can't thank you enough. I mean, we don't have a housed school district, um, preschool. However, in some way you're providing so much, um, great early literacy opportunities. So thank you. It's worth every dollar.
That's the whole thing we try to do at the library too, is everything, all the kids' activities are based around literacy, science, technology, math.
You do an amazing job. And Emily was out a couple of weeks ago. We greeted all these new kindergarten families. And it meant so much that she was at that door with me welcoming them in and she had a free book for every five-year-old walking in. And the fact that they knew Emily from the library and had that connection to you guys, just what you do in terms of community outreach is fantastic. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Take all my money.
One, one thing that I guess one point of the program too, is when you sign up to be a member of the Imagination Library as a sponsoring organization, you can't ask parents who participate for money and you can't charge for any. It all has to be through donation.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That's the last of them. Oh. There I missed on the list.
The middle school?
Oh, she was, said that she wasn't here. Scappus Middle School. High School.
Uh, at Scappus High School with
Oh, there it is.
One of these handsome men.
I think it's the Shakespeare Fest.
Yes. Okay. Um, I started taking students, high school students to the Shakespeare Festival in 2017. And it was wonderful and amazing and, and we did a lot of fundraising to get there. And we got money from the boosters and, uh, Scappus Parent Association. And, um, the next year we did it again and it was great. And we, we were, you know, we were a part of organizing the Candy Coles Holiday Bazaar at the high school and we got funds that way. We sold candles and we did bake sales and all kinds of stuff. And then the third year we partnered with, uh, Scappus Theater Department. They have a theater club after school. And, and when we did that, we were able to get our bus and our bus driver and all the gas paid for. So that took the, took a, a big chunk of, of money out of our fundraising feats. But the club is no longer there and Scappus Parent Association, as far as I know, has dissolved. Not totally sure about that. But then, you know, in 2020, it all just fell apart. And, and last year we didn't go. And so this is year six and we have 14. So we started out with 20 kids and then we boosted it up to, uh, 35 kids. And now we have 14 kids coming because raising money has been a little difficult. So I'm here asking for your help to make this, make this going because it's such an, uh, valuable experience for so many kids who don't often get to do stuff like this.
Cheers.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions?
Probably.
Why we got her, all the school questions go right to.
Sorry.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Actually, it's 10.
We're out of order. Sorry you were skipped over.
Yeah.
My job to keep him in line and I didn't. Okay.
She doesn't have the zapper with her.
So, um, currently how much? Okay. Sorry. I'm just reading it.
So this year, instead of using the bus, which is an expensive, uh, thing to use, we, I've gotten my minibus driver's license.
Okay.
I will drive the minibus, which only fits 14 kids, just part of the reason why we're only taking 14 kids here. And, um, the, it per kid to go down there, it's, it's upwards of $300 for the weekend. Like, because we get a discount for the tickets through the Shakespeare Festival and we get a discount on the, on the hotel room. And so food and everything else, kind of an expensive trip. And, and I don't want to offer it just to kids who can afford it. I want to offer it to everybody.
Sure. So the, it is listed under transportation, bus and gas is 1,300. So 1,300 is for you to drive, to pay, to fuel the bus.
1,300 is to take the bus for the weekend and to fuel the bus.
Who owns the bus?
Uh, the bus barn.
So it's to rent the bus?
Yeah.
Got it.
The driver. Driver is paid for the weekend. And then we raise money for the driver's hotel and food.
But I thought you said you were.
This year I'm driving.
Okay.
Just to kind of jump over that hurdle and not have to
Okay.
raise that much money.
Got it.
We have funds left over from 2020 because we, we raised money through
Sure.
different outlets. And so I have money to take, um, I think the 14 kids going this year will end up paying about a hundred dollars each. And then I'm funding the rest of it through the funds that I have left over. So the funds that I'm asking for tonight will go towards next year's Shakespeare.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm just trying to understand. Um, so for, so for this year, you're covered. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So are you, you're looking for money for fiscal year 2022, 23?
Didn't think that this would, this, these monies, if I were rewarded, these monies, they would come in time to go on the trip this year because our trip this year is Jan, uh, sorry, June 10th. June 2nd is when you guys decide, right?
You're good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done. So Isaac. What's the next steps in the process?
Sit down correctly. Um, so basically we just need to understand from council who you wish to fund. Basically, that was the purpose of the score sheet is to make sure that at least four members of council want to fund, uh, each organization receive money. Um, as soon as those are tabulated and I receive them, I'll let you know all sheets from all seven counselors getting four votes or more. And then you'll allocate your portion of the funds. Um, so that next council meeting, we can, um, move and go ahead and allocate the funding, which will then eventually be released by first organizations.
All right. Thank you very much.
Question. Uh, Isaac, the, the ones who didn't present today, are they still on the docket? We just read the document or are they?
Yeah. So everybody had the opportunity to come and present. Some chose not to. Um, so it's again, at this point, it's up to council.
Still considering them.
I have a clarifying question. Um, oh, of course, I just had, um, when is your trip, Ryan? June 20?
June 27.
So we wouldn't be informing that group until July 1st. So.
They'll get informed before that.
Okay.
Money doesn't allocate until the fiscal year start, which is July.
I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Okay. 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 I just want to make sure that your needs were, yeah, okay, great.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item, new business. We're just going to put three and four together. Canceling the July 5th and August 15th city council meeting minutes. July 5th, mostly because the day after the 4th of July, they'll be putting out Tyler's house from the fire. It's not going to work. August 15th, there's just currently nothing on the agenda. We usually slow down a little bit during the summer. So although it says it requires approval, it doesn't without any objections by council, I'll just go ahead and cancel those meetings. Any objections?
Apparently.
Right.
This is going to be on file or something.
You object to that?
I guess I'm going to be busy.
Make sure there's an engine parked out front.
All right. Next is announcements, uh, calendar. Our next council meeting is, actually it is June 6th with a joint work session with the Planning Commission at 6:00 PM, city council meeting at 7 o'clock.
Getting nervous.
Are you?
Yeah.
Tomorrow is a 50-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting. The 23rd and 24th are budget committee meetings at 5:30 PM. Pretending that I needed, isn't there. Uh, the 19th, we have Economic Development Committee meeting at noon, Parks and Rec Committee meeting at 6. Next Planning Commission meeting is on the 22nd, 26th at 7:00 PM. And farmers market every Saturday through the summer. Alex, you have anything?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Uh, this will probably be my, uh, last city council meeting. So I just want to say thanks for the opportunity. It's, had a great time, got a good city and a good department here and things work out.
Thank you for your service. Counselor.
Yes.
Hey, Brandon, do you have anything?
Nothing. Excuse me, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Counselor Miller.
Uh, just a thank you to, uh, Brian Jensen for stepping in and helping the city out until we get our new, uh, chief of police hired. Thank you. I've heard great things about, uh, your work, we'll call it, uh, by City Manager Rain. So again, thank you.
Mr. Boeing.
Uh, I just want to say thank you as well. Um, appreciate you coming and helping us out. So, um, also, uh, attended the farmers market last Saturday. I think everybody should. Um, it's a great event that gets put on. Um, and there are some great vendors out there and the more we support, the more that, uh, that thing can grow. So, um, I also, there's been a recent, uh, actually Portland Public, uh, Parks and Rec has a new park out. What is an all-inclusive park? I think that's a great, um, uh, just concept to be able to be as inclusive as possible to everybody. And if anybody gets a chance, it's Gabriel Park and Playground. They've got some amazing, amazing equipment for people of all abilities. And I think it's something that, you know, uh, I would love to look at more and it would be a great, um, project going forward. So.
I just wanted to thank everybody that's either left or still here that presented, um, uh, your applications tonight. You guys are all in the business of serving other people in very selfless ways. So, um, thank you for your work and all that you do. Um, I was hoping you were going to cancel the June 6th meeting so I didn't have to lead it.
We're gonna, we are going to announce that we're going to have the fluoride debate.
Oh, yeah, all the hot topics.
Yeah, all the hot topics will be on June 6th.
Um, you had mentioned on the calendar that hopefully we get that budget meeting done in one evening. Unfortunately, that evening is the same as a school district work session, um, culminating a, a project of three years, working on the equity, um, policy that's going to be put in front of the school district at 6:30 and I'm part of that group. So I will be here at 5:30 and start off the budget meeting. I'm going to go make that pitch to the school board and then I bet we'll still be going here. So I will be back. Thank you.
So we won't make you chair.
Please don't.
Counselor McQ.
Yeah. At our last council meeting, I, I, I stated that there must be some misunderstanding with the, uh, Yeah, at our last council meeting, I I I stated that there must be some misunderstanding with the uh, the park and rec money only being uh used for no, no uh capital outlay expenses for park and rec. And uh, I said, there has to be some misunderstanding, and there sure was. I misunderstood. And I I just want to say my apologies to to Isaac and to to uh Alex that uh I said, there has to be some misunderstanding. Well, at a uh one of our meetings that we had in goal setting, and I uh recall after Alex reminded me that we had talked about, we didn't actually do a vote, we did a poll. I didn't vote for it, but five other counselors did. And I agree with that because that's what we do. We we make decisions based upon the majority, and it was the right decision to make under those circumstances. But uh, I was wrong, and I've also talked to the people that I implicated that maybe they can figure out a better way to get that money. So that's the way it is. And if some of you out there don't understand what I'm talking about, it's okay, because obviously I didn't understand either. Anyway, it's all good. Thank you.
I appreciate your your humility and honesty in everything that you do, Pete. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so I got a a chance on Wednesday to say a few words at the ribbon cutting for the P C C campus. And a little more emotional than I expected because I don't know, Joey, I don't know if you know, my my father passed away last Monday. And it was one of those things where, you know, my dad would call me all the time and want to talk for hours about what's going on in the city. So he hadn't lived here for probably about ten years. It was important to him to, you know, it was a city he raised four kids and, you know, lived here for all these years. Back when my brother played baseball and my sister played softball, and the varsity teams would take the carpet cleaning machine down to the field, suck up the water so that games could be played. Yeah, yeah, Dad used to do that. And um when the city didn't have a website, kind of a funny story is that he was self-taught himself how to make websites back in late nineties, early two thousands into computers. And put a bid in that the city manager opened, and he well underbid everyone else. So he actually designed the first city scapus website. Operated for many years at very little money, which was really nice for the city. But you know, he, part of it was a passion. For a time, my mom and dad both did and updated the scapus senior center website as well for no charge. So they're both are very involved in this community, and now they're both back together. And I I try to find the humor and things. I got to see him last Monday before he passed away, and the last thing I showed him, and he watched intently, even though he couldn't really speak, was the clip from the speech from the annual town hall meeting. I I I I know political speeches can go long and boring and didn't think it, but I think that he was happy that that was probably one of the last things that he saw from me was me doing my work here as a mayor. Tomorrow morning, I'm driving over to Redmond to be with my family. Funeral is tomorrow morning and not today because, well, I had a meeting tonight and got to serve and do your service. But it was also an opportunity for me to commemorate him. You know, the stuff he did. And so at the P C C thing, obviously, there was some handouts. That is a phenomenal opportunity for the future of the community. And I said it in this, when I spoke on Wednesday, that between the O M I C R N D and the P C C training, uh, you know, when people ask what scapus is about, what we're going to be about in the future is this in-process, high-end, advanced manufacturing, research and development, and training of the next generation workers and for students in scapus. To have that training facility and the R and D center here that are interested in looking for another option other than college, college isn't for everyone. But these training programs, putting you into a machining, welding, uh, other I, you know, high-end jobs that pay really well with very low student loan debt, which is a big discussion right now, is a great opportunity for our students. So I'm, I know the school district has been really involved with O M I C both at the R and D and the training center, and I hope that continues because that that's going to be the future the center of this community. And it's really exciting. And if you haven't gotten a chance to go over there and see it, go and get a tour or walk onto the P C C campus. And they have manufacturing day in October. Get a chance to go down to the O M I C R N D facility and see if you can check it out. They've got a second building going up. They're gonna have a paved parking lot, I think, which they're most excited about to be able to work there. And they're already planning for the third building. The second building, I like to tell is basically three D printing of really high-end metals and materials. So it's really exciting research that's going to be going on there. And I think that anyone that doesn't have a chance to take a look at that and see what what's going on there is missing out on something amazing going on in scapus. And like I said, is I had the opportunity to go over to Sheffield when we first were looking at trying to bring this here, seeing what happened there. We're kind of on the same course. We're getting a lot of support from the state, the federal government, we're getting a lot of business support. Oregon Tech owns the property, kind of oversees it all for the research and development. P C C is not out here. And the future is really great, and it's going to really start attracting some of these businesses to get involved, or they want a business wants to saddle up next to something like this because they want their tools or equipment to be the part that solves the problem. If it is, then it goes into the manufacturing processes. And so that's going to create more jobs out here to service and support this. So I'm excited about that. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anything else?
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. I need foster dad over to you.
Meeting adjourned.